Good evening, welcome to the Village Board.
Absent tonight, Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery is absent. Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca is absent. Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Acting Finance Director Parker. I know he's here.
Here.
Human Resource Director Casey. Let's see. Deputy Police Chief Gunther.
Here.
And a cast of thousands from our police department. I don't even know where to start, so.
If anyone would please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes of the October 13th, 2011 Committee of the Whole Meeting and October 17th, 2011 Village Board Meeting. Motion, please.
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Nero.
Questions? Changes? Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes. Okay, now we're gonna get into the fun stuff. We're going to start with the recycling contest winners. The Village conducted a recycling contest earlier this year in participation with Westmont and Waste Management, Chamber of Commerce, and DuPage County. Magnetic personality, huh? Yeah, right. Okay, at this time, I would like to have John Kern come to the podium to say a few words, and then after that, we will have Mr. Forsberg come up and make a few comments, if he would be so kind. Well means.
Evening. Thank you. I want to thank the Village of Westmont, the Westmont Chamber, and Waste Management for partnering with the county on this very important program. And first, I'd like to congratulate Berry Aluminum, one of our winners this evening. Berry is a company that sells and installs siding, windows, soffit, gutter, door, and roofing. They recycle several hundred pounds of cardboard and aluminum each week. They recycle all material from office, lunch area, throughout the workplace. They incentivize employees to recycle aluminum by providing a $1 aluminum scrap bonus for every 100 pounds they scrap. Berry Aluminum is a certified green siding and trim contractor through a certain teed corporation, a manufacturer of building materials including roofing, siding, windows, fence, and other materials. So I'd certainly like to congratulate Berry on their award. And we have a representative from Berry Aluminum. Next, we'd like to congratulate Frame Acres. Frame Acres was the winner in the most improved small business recycling category. This company provides framing services for artwork. They use only metal and wood frames because wood is biodegradable and can be reused or donated. The majority of their wood frames come from renewable forestry. The metal frames can be recut or reused, and leftover scrap metal is taken to a recycler. With proceeds from scrap sales, they buy their employees lunch, so it certainly incentivizes recycling in the workplace. They never use plastic frames as they contain lead and cannot be recut or repaired for reuse. Plastic frames always end up in a landfill. They also recycle smaller recyclables, including cans, bottles, glass, and bags, while reusing the paper between the sheets of glass, cardboard boxes, and packing materials such as bubble wrap. In addition to recycling, they turn off lights, computers, and ensure there is no dripping water. So I would certainly like to congratulate Frame Acres. I know we have a representative here this evening.
Big smiles here. Kinda kinda three, one, two, and three. Perfect, thank you.
And finally, winner in the best and most improved big business recycler category is InterVarsity Press. This company is a publisher of Christian books for over 50 years. They recycled 12,055 pounds of all office paper in 2010 in addition to recycling glass, aluminum, and plastic in office. They purchased a refurbished baler to recycle cardboard corrugated materials, and in 2010 recycled 58,710 pounds. They designated an area of employee bulletin board to post environmental statistics in order to build awareness about recycling. And in 2007, they signed the Green Press Initiative and created an in-house paper policy with specific five-year goals. So we at the county would certainly like to congratulate InterVarsity Press on their accomplishment.
Thank you.
Good evening. Larry Forsberg with the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. First of all, I want to say thank you to the many businesses that participate in this contest. These were just a few fine examples of the things that are being done for recycling in our community. And obviously, with everything that's going on in terms of recycling in today's world, it's important to focus on what we're doing to increase the recycling rate, not only in our homes, but in our business community. So thank you to the Village of Westmont, to the County of DuPage, and to all the participating businesses that were in this program. We look forward to doing it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, gonna go right to Police Department. Chief, if you would step forward and please take the podium, and I will let you take it from here.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call Officers John Majewski, Greg Hausner, Sean Ryan, and David Hamlin to come up and join me here at the podium. Also, I'd like to call Deputy Chief Jim Gunther, along with the members of the department's Awards Committee to join me as well, and that's Sergeant Gabe Ruluski, Detective Tim Radke, and Patricia Smallwood. As you can tell, it's a pretty big night for us in the Police Department, and that's something that we get to do very often, and something of an honor such as great as this. I'm very, very humbled and nervous because I'm very honored to be able to do this this evening. Tonight, I want to recognize four officers for their actions on the night of August 28th and award them one of the department's highest honors, the Star of Valor Award. The department recognizes acts of heroism, life-saving, exceptional performance, and service to the department and the community. The Star of Valor is awarded to personnel who have performed an act or acts of bravery above and beyond the call of duty. The Star of Valor has not been issued to an officer with the Westmont Police Department since 1989, when it was issued to then Sergeant Frank C. Trout. I am honored to describe to you the outstanding actions of these four officers. In doing so, though, there is a criminal case which is outstanding, so I must state that all actions of the offender that I will describe to you this evening are alleged actions, and he is presumed innocent until proven guilty. On Sunday, August 28th, 2011, the Westmont Fire Department responded to a medical emergency in Westmont. Upon entering the residence, they met a male sitting in the bedroom who was covered by a blanket from the waist down. As fire personnel entered the room, the offender removed the blanket and allegedly pointed a black revolver handgun at the medics. The medics immediately exited the room and then called for police assistance. Patrol Officers John Majewski, Gregory Hausner, Sean Ryan, and David Hamlin responded to the call for assistance involving a man with a gun. Upon entering the residence, the officers heard sounds of a struggle coming from the bedroom. The officer observed the offender holding a revolver handgun while his wife was wrestling with him on the bed. It appeared as if she was attempting to remove the gun from his hand. Officers immediately issued commands for the offender to drop his weapon, but he did not do so. The offender then allegedly pointed the revolver directly at Officer Majewski. Officer Majewski observed the offender to have his finger inside the trigger guard of that weapon. The offender's wife was positioned between the offender and the officers, which further complicated the volatile situation. Concerned for the safety of the offender's wife and for the offender himself over their own, and recognizing an deteriorating tactical situation, the officers utilized their training, years of experience, and sound tactical judgment. They rushed the offender to disarm him while moving the wife to a position of safety. Together, the officers disarmed the offender and took him into custody. This was done without injury to everyone present during this incident. Later, after examining the revolver, the officers discovered that it was fully loaded with ammunition. These four officers faced a life-threatening situation. They placed their own lives and safety at risk while performing an outstanding act of bravery while recognizing the priority of life posed to the offender and his wife, as well as to themselves. Their actions were clearly above and beyond the call of duty. Their actions displayed unbelievable courage and were an incredible act of bravery. As their chief, I am extremely proud and honored to be here this evening and to award Officers John Majewski, Gregory Hausner, Sean Ryan, and David Hamlin the department's Star of Valor Award. Please join me in congratulating and offering our sincere thanks and appreciation for a job well done. I'd like to also acknowledge that the room is packed, and as also present in the room are members of the officers' families. And usually, as officers, we go home, and when asked when we go home and our wives ask what happened today, what's going on, usually, we pretty much say, "No, not much, not too much, nothing really of importance." And I don't know if these officers came home and told their wives and their family exactly what they did that night, but to each of all the members of the family here for these officers, you start to be extremely proud of what they did that night, because I know we are, and they did an outstanding job. Presented to each officer, which they will proudly wear on their uniforms, is the Star of Valor Medal. Again, this award has only been issued very rarely, and only to two officers in the past. Also, each officer will receive this award. It's a certificate award. The certificates certifies that Officer Sean Ryan, John Majewski, Gregory Hausner, and David Hamlin are awarded Star of Valor for bravery above and beyond the call of duty. That is November 7th, signed by myself, signed by Mayor William H. Ron, and signed by Clerk Virginia Shumsky. Congratulations. Again, another round of applause for their outstanding actions. And I can't top that, so with that, do you guys want to see the board? While these outstanding officers are visiting the board, I'd like to invite everyone back to the Police Department at 500 North Cass, where we have a cake and coffee reception. Coffee from Mrs. Archibald, who volunteered her time and the cakes to be there. So please come back and join us and welcome us there. Thank you.
I'll wait a few moments for the room to fill out, and then we'll continue. You can't write notes on this program. This is just a viewer, but there are programs. I just don't have it yet, but that's what you owe me, for sure, because I see you taking notes. I'd be lost without it. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move on a little bit more. If I could have the Village Manager, the next couple of items, if you would like to.
Sure.
These are?
Just kinda continuing with the recognition and the award theme, I wanted to mention two things that recently were awarded to the village. You will remember, several years ago, we created an ad hoc climate change committee. The leader of that committee was George Hamper, who used to be the chairman of our Environmental Improvement Commission. Well, he had the pleasure of recently attending a meeting of the Sierra Club in which the village was awarded, and I think you've got a copy of it there, a recognition for meeting the Cool Cities Milestone Climate Action Plan. And as many of you will recall, about a year ago, you adopted this committee's climate action plan. We're coming up on, actually, it's been a little over a year, and there will be a report that you will hear on our achievement towards reducing the levels of greenhouse gas emissions by 40% by 2012. That was the goal established in that plan for our own municipal operations, and then by 45% by 2020 for our municipal operations. So you'll be hearing a report towards the beginning of this next calendar year on our activities for the past year in trying to work towards that achievement. The other award that I wanted to mention is the fact that we received our, I believe it's our seventh Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. That's commonly known as the CAFR Award. It is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by our finance department. So I'd like to thank our Acting Finance Director and his staff, Spencer Parker and his staff, for their excellent work in continuing to work on our behalf.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other notes from the mayor at this point in time. Anything from the clerk, please?
Well, I just wanted to welcome everybody that, Billy Flanner and Assistant Economic Development Director Malick is here. I lost her in the crowd out there. I thought she was here. I marked her present, but I couldn't find her. Secondly, I want to remind the residents again that during the month of November, you get two leaf bags a week free. So, but they have to be in the paper bags, so take advantage of it. It's the whole month. Your garbage day pickup day, you can put out two leaf bags free. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Village Attorney?
I've got two things. I passed out two packets of information tonight. One is a request for a groundwater restriction ordinance for the property at 4, I'm sorry, 2 West Ogden Avenue. I had mentioned this at Thursday night's meeting. Wasn't sure of the property address. Confirmed, this is the former Shell Station at the northwest corner of Cass and Ogden. You may recall, you previously approved a groundwater restriction ordinance for the Shell Station at Cass and 63rd Street, along with an indemnification agreement. Those identical, I guess identical ordinance and agreement are attached. And included on the last page of the ordinance is a map depicting the area for which the groundwater restriction would be in place. And what that does is prohibit well water use within that area. None of the properties within that area currently use well water. However, properties adjacent to the hatched area are in Liberty Park, and those, some adjacent properties do use well water, but none of those properties would be affected by this agreement. I just wanted to give you a heads up as to this, and ask that it be placed on the next agenda for your consideration, and we'll try and get some more information. Preliminary feedback from Public Works was, did not appear to be a problem. And just further background, when there is petroleum contamination on site, owners typically work with the IEPA to obtain a no further remediation letter, which means that certain amounts of contamination can remain on the site. But they do, the IEPA requests this groundwater restriction order ordinance be in place. And then the second item I passed out, I had meant to pass out last week. It is some materials related to residential rental programs. Ron Searle actually pulled these up initially and given them to me. The first is a real nice summary and survey and draft ordinance from the city of St. Charles. And the second is a Village of Niles ordinance. And then lastly, is our existing ordinance. Just some background information as you consider this at our next set of meetings. And I thought it's interesting to, with the survey in particular that St. Charles did, showing a number of the communities that have similar programs in place and what their fees are. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Village Manager?
Just one other thing I wanted to mention, that since Thursday, we had a couple of inquiries from board members on the finance ordinance, and we are going to remove several invoices. I'll give you those numbers. Invoice 20100799 in the amount of $140, and invoice 20100801 in the amount of $120, and 20100803 in the amount of $60. There were some questions that were raised that we need a little more time to research, and we expect that we'll probably have at least some portion of this back on the next finance for board consideration. And that's all I had.
Thank you. Before we get into some of the other items, our agenda item number seven. We have a Ms. Virginia Garrett here from the DAR, and it has to do with the National American Indian Heritage Month Proclamation. And if the board doesn't mind, if you would have a few words you'd like to say, if you'd like to step up to the podium?
This is a very interesting meeting, so I don't know if anyone here is from the DAR. But anyway, I'm supposed to read this from national, me to give them some publicity. "And 75 years ago, the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, started programs to provide financial and educational assistance to Native Americans. We now support Baycon College in Muskogee, Oklahoma, Shamawa Indian School in Salem, Oregon, the Indian Youth of America Summer Camps in five states, and we offer three types of scholarships. Most importantly, Shamawa Indian School now requires students to take classes in Indian culture and participate in performing arts with traditional music and chantes. And that's in contrast to, not too long ago, they were not allowed to do that by law. So this is hoping to give them a sense of pride and help them with many of their problems." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving back to the top, unfinished business. Residential rental licensing ordinance. Board to consider a motion authorizing village staff to prepare an ordinance and accompanying documentation for the licensing of all residential rental units for consideration at an upcoming Village Board meeting.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Nero.
Want a question?
Any anticipation when you're trying to get the goal for this thing started? I mean, we can't even take care of the apartment rental we have right now. I'm just wondering how fast, speed you want to put this in?
Well, at the next meeting, I would like to have the ordinance for you and supporting information for at least initial consideration. As far as actual implementation of it, when it would take effect, we had discussed delaying any implementation until after the, at the start of the next fiscal year to determine whether there is funding for this program and adequate staffing. So it would be up to the board to say whether they would, if the ordinance meets your approval, to enact it now with a effective date in seven or so months, or whether you'd want to just sit on it, see how the budget talks go. The problem is, if you're inclined to move forward with this, it's best to publicize it, get word out, get the forms prepared, so that when the next fiscal year starts, you're ready to implement it right away.
When you talk the next fiscal, you're not talking about 2012, then?
Talking about May 1st, 2012.
May 1st.
Right, right. It'd be part of the budget discussions. We would come to you with recommendations in terms of staffing levels that we felt we needed to implement the program.
If it turns out that the ordinance is passed and this doesn't make it through the budget cuts, then certainly the ordinance can be rescinded and never implemented.
How are you gonna work on the budget when we have no idea how many homes? How can you figure out the cost or what we're gonna need to do? Because we have no idea how many homes out there are even rentals. So you're just gonna pull a number out of the sky?
We have an estimate. I'll share that information with you. I thought I gave a brief guesstimate, perhaps I didn't at the last meeting, but in the report that you receive, you'll get a sense of
How many?
How many, at least, are known or thought to be known. It is a little more difficult than the multifamily.
Oh, it's a lot, and it could be a lot of time-consuming. That's what worries me, and we're so low on staff as it is right now. That's... The other question, too, then, is, what you just gave us here, is there gonna be some kind of concept for these temporary rentals? People who only anticipate putting their home up for a year because they're gonna be out of the country. That's happened to my sister, out of the country for a year or two, and then it goes back to, they would go back to living in it.
It's hard to gauge intent, so I, my feeling is, if you're renting your single-family house, or duplex, or condo, you fall under the scope of the ordinance and you have to pay a license.
Even if you're renting it to family?
Regardless, because anyone can say, "Hey, my plan is only to do this for a year," and 20 years later, they're still renting their house.
Even a family member is a rental, then?
Well, if there's an arms-length transaction and they're paying rent, yes.
Anything else? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
No.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes. New business. Lot coverage variance request for 324 Black Hawk Drive. Board to consider an ordinance approving a variance request for lot coverage greater than 30% in a defined moratorium area for the purpose of constructing a single-story addition.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Nero.
A question?
While I struggled with this one due to Mr. Hearne Sarek's information that he brought forth to where the water does go towards Black Hawk and doesn't go into the Warwick area, I'm looking favorable at this now.
Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Downtown development permit, 36 North Cass. Board to consider an ordinance approving a development grant for J. Wilder Studios, a photography studio in downtown B-1 District at 36 North Cass Avenue. A motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Scott.
Questions? None? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau?
Yes.
For East Ogden Avenue, final plat of subdivision request. Board to consider an ordinance approving a final plat of subdivision request from Supervyu with Jetco Properties Jewel Express.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Nero.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau?
Yes.
2011 Westmont Holly Day Celebration. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following request for Westmont 2011 Holly Day Celebration. Permit amplified sound in the downtown business district near Westmont Center on November 25th, 2011, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. for Holly Day's opening ceremony. Close the first block of West Quincy Street on November 25th, 2011, from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. for the Holly Day's opening ceremony. Close a section of Cass Avenue from Trobee to 55th Street on November 25th, 2011, from 6:15 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the Frosty and Friends Night Parade. Close off sections of several streets between Burlington Avenue and Trobee, west of Cass Avenue on November 26th, 2011, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. for the Holly Day's 5K Family Run Walk. Can we take it as a block?
Yes.
Motion, please.
Motion to approve as a block, Nero.
Second, Scott.
Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
National American Indian Heritage Month Proclamation. Board to consider a proclamation designated in November as National American Indian Month in the Village of Westmont.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Nero.
This was read on Thursday evening, for all that may ask. No questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
National Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month Proclamation. Board to consider a proclamation designated in November as a pancreatic cancer awareness month in the Village of Westmont. A motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Scott.
This was also read on Thursday evening. No questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Meeting consolidation. Board to consider a motion to postpone consideration of an ordinance creating guidelines for the consolidation of village board and committee of the whole meetings until December 1st, 2011.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Nero.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Mutual agreement and release. Board to consider an ordinance approving a mutual agreement and release.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Nero.
Questions? None? Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Finance ordinance, number 13.
Do I need a corrected number on that?
As amended, or is that?
Same number, it's just as amended.
No, the cost went down, so it's got to be.
I don't have the.
Eight hundred eighty-four thousand.
It's total of $320 less.
Yeah, it's 320 less. That would be 884,000,000, 084.71 cents, if I did it correct.
That's correct.
Our acting finance director says yes, so.
I haven't forgotten my math yet. Thank you.
As amended, all right. We have before us on this 7th day of November, 2011, an amended finance ordinance in the amount of 884,000, $84.71.
Motion. Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Nero.
No questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Purchase orders.
Motion to approve as a block for $65,750.
Second, Nero.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
We have no request for executive session tonight. Anything else to come before the board this evening? If not, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Scott.
Nero.
Roll call, please.
He was so soft, I barely heard. Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
We stand adjourned.